I'd like to convene the meeting of Board of Education on November 21st, 2024. The time is 6:02. All right. Just abandoned a bunch of papers. Let's see when we start. Okay. Roll call, please.
Chairman Vamke.
Here.
Vice Chair Nasriel.
Here.
Secretary Tiana.
Here.
Ms. Dannon.
Here.
Mr. Canada.
Here.
Ms. Dawson.
Here.
Victoria Lom.
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors, any comments are limited to the id's on the agenda? And student representatives. Hi, guys.
Hi.
On October 2nd, WTNH Channel 8 visited NBHS to capture video while touring the school and to complete interviews for their series What's Right With Schools. The segment aired on October 22nd and featured pieces about the new facility and associated programming at NBHS. The NBHS Career Fair took place on November 20th with several representatives from all types of professions providing workshops for students. WTNH's Laura Hutchinson was a keynote speaker during the close of the event.
On Sunday, October 27th, the NBHS Model United Nations Organization attended a statewide conference at the University of New Haven, which included a competition. NBHS placed second overall and was named a distinguished delegation for its efforts and performance. NBHS Veterans Day activities run on November 8th with 18 veterans present. A musical performance was provided, a lunch for guests was held, and a roundtable discussion with students took place. Veterans included parents of current students, graduates, employees, former coaches, and board of ed members of Mr. Canada. On the same day, members of the class of 2029, currently eighth grade students, visited NBHS to attend the annual Tiber Fair. The event included a panel discussion led by high school leaders, a club and organization fair, and video presentations about the school and the new facility.
Students were provided an opportunity to nominate peers for the Fall SOAR Awards. This information was provided during advisory. Nominations for students and staff are completed by using school-issued email accounts. The SOAR event will be held on November 27th with parents of award recipients invited. Recipients are individuals who have exemplified the attributes associated with SOAR, the NBHS vision of the graduate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So before...
I think I saw somebody on Channel 8 news.
Maybe. We're gonna try... Yeah. For What's Right For Schools, so we had TNH there twice within the last month. I'm gonna ask Ms. Lee to just talk about the Career Fair because we really need to do a shout-out. Sam Bodie and Jen Tetteau, once again, did an amazing job bringing in over 43 representatives of different career opportunities and met in small groups throughout the building with the freshmen and sophomores, and they raved about it. You know, having Laura Hutchinson there to kind of close it out was really special because the kids recognize her and get excited. But her message about how lucky you are to have a staff that wants to expose you to experiences, and she shared how it handled this, is how she got started. Someone came in, did a presentation, she started doing the school news, she started doing the messages on the board, and got into the plan. All of it turned into her career with where she is now today. So Megan, if you want to just speak on that?
It was such a great day, and just huge thank you to Sam, Bodie, and just behind-the-scenes work and contacting and getting everyone there. And we get such great response from the students. A lot of them actually said, "I know what I want to do now. I go to college, I'm gonna go to the lake." Completely uncomplimented, it was really wonderful. We had tons of alumni come back, too.
Right.
It was just fantastic. And what was it, 19s?
Yeah, we told 15 retirees from '79 to 2017, almost from 2000 on.
Wow.
Yes.
It was fantastic. Staff seeing the students in the walls that they were kind of helping to support towards, so it was a really wonderful day.
Well, that's wonderful.
And that will just continue to grow because others are already saying, "I want to be involved next year. I want to be a presenter. I want to talk to the kids about, you know, my career and how I got here."
Wow, that's great.
Thanks, good, thank you, guys. Perfect. Last dismissed.
Any edge you can give the kids.
Wow, guys, have a good night.
Any edge you can give the kids. You know what I mean? Any insight. One of the things that they used to do, and I'm not sure, I haven't been able to recall the last couple of years, was they changed it to capstone. But when they did those other projects, you know, and you'd go in and somebody maybe shadowed, you know, a nurse at a hospital or something, and you know, and say, "Well, is this, you know, what you want to do?" "No, this made me decide that I don't want to do."
That's important, too.
Which is important, which is just as important, do you know what I mean? And some would be like, "Yes, definitely what I'm, you know, really excited to do this."
And Sam and Jen teamed to do that as well. So they work on these two major things to look in here. So they have a nice connection with the kids, and that just helps for those finished products when they have to decide.
Because as a parent, it's kind of disblading when the kids think they're going for one thing, and you're paying for all these classes, and then all of a sudden, they do a 180, and you got another year you have to pick up now, and it's hard. It's hard on them, too.
Stressful at the time of their lives.
Absolutely. Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda of the Thursday, November 21st, 2024 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
Second.
I mean, I think the field trip, you know, we do that every year. I think that's a great idea, and, you know, the two retirements that we have, we're sending the best of luck.
One, one retirement.
Well, what's a retirement? What's a resignation?
One resignation.
May I just ask when Wendy Jones is effective?
End of school year.
End of school year?
End of school year.
Two years, that's a long time.
Yeah.
Okay. Take a vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any objections?
And I want to publicly recognize Wendy Jones for her commitment to our staff and students. She will be missed. And I always speak behalf of Judy as well, but she is such a dedicated educator, connects with kids, hasn't lost a step. But it was the right time in her career and where she's at, so we wish her nothing but the best, and thank her. And I know Beth is nodding her head as well. She's been...
What's for Jerome, Gary Campbell for us?
Yeah. So, okay.
Superintendent.
My show. Okay, we're honored to have Lauren Plasky here from the high school, and her husband, Steve, accompanying her, who was our district teacher of the year. We were at the awards ceremony at the Bushnell. Three weeks, two weeks?
Two.
Two weeks.
I think which was conferences, which was that.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, right, right. They gave a map of my head. About two weeks ago.
And it was just an honor to be president. I'm gonna ask Mr. Steffler or Ms. Lee to just talk a little bit about Ms. Plasky, and then we have a very small token of appreciation for you.
Sure. Is the bio on your board pack that says these classes are instrumental, they're an instrumental part of the math department? You should teach algebra, too. I say you should prep. I think one of the best pieces of more directly, she's able to use all types of words, you know, math for some kids and for some adults, for language, who may be developing a bad using approach, very kind way to control kids and challenge kids that are the most have the strongest aptitude in math, and also that are somewhat reluctant and less confident. Anytime that one of her colleagues are on a tour leave, she's part of the plan to support her colleagues and follow the long-term stuffs and covering classes, and she's a great resource for all students. So last year, when we announced Teacher of the Year, the nomination process led by Ms. Lee involved colleagues submitting adjectives about all the recipes of the periods, the nominees. And so we announced, and I bet all those great adjectives about Lauren, the one that we concluded was, I think it's the most important, is that Lauren's a regular name. We're very fortunate to have her here at North River High because she's part of running the math teacher.
Thank you. We're gonna do a little photo here. So this is, you know, we'll just maybe then have...
See?
And then Steve's second, and then you then as well. For the Christmas photo.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm gonna stand next to Lauren, so I might miss her, too.
Give him a chair.
I wore the last, but I mean, I told Lauren to wear it.
Then I'd really be chopping up everything. Thank you.
All right, and if you could just tiptoe around out of the ward, just, if you want to go on the outside, that's our piece here. And have them grab the cards. See, that's your...
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I'll find her first. I'll be honest with you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I think they advocate for us quite well in a lot of the process.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, yes, oh, yeah. That's how I knew what North River was because my college, you know, president of the head office, you know, I guess that's the first time I heard of college. Yeah, so, yeah, what a small world, right? Someone's given this...
All comes full circle.
Wow, cool.
You're dismissed to go over the rap papers.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Gavin. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Get back to work, kid. That's awesome.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Oh, she's beautiful. It's great.
Was she?
Yeah.
Oh, how cool.
That's awesome. Board briefs are attached, I'm obviously not gonna read through all of the board briefs, but if you have any questions, administrators are here. I don't know who went first, so I don't like...
Well, we'll also go first.
All right. Martha, you go ahead.
I just, I noticed that the professional development for the high school, teachers were, got training in Title IX, human trafficking, and report reporters, but none of the other schools did. I went back and looked through what the professional development topics were. Is that something that other teachers are going to...
You did.
You did the previous months. Okay, all right. Great.
So all schools have the same...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just have a quick, I was gonna ask Mr. Bodie or Ms. Parker, and I'm sorry, I should've given you a heads-up, but this is an easy one. I just wondered if you could give me a quick kind of a summary of a ghost walk. Is it a learning walk with no children in the building? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yeah, I can speak to that. It's essentially a learning walk without children in the building.
Okay.
The focus of the walk, and as you see in the board's back, it's in the briefs, the TPS staff and Jerome's staff, she spent the entire day on Monday collaborating with the board. We started with that, Jerome. We did a ghost walk of Jerome. We formed vertical teams, so teachers from 3K to 5th grade composed one team, in addition to special educators, friends and health team, and arts. And the purpose of it was to walk the building, walk the learning environment, and identify artifacts of thinking, identify professional content from kindergarten all the way through 5th grade. So we participated in that at Jerome in the morning, there's small break, a big day for lunch, and in the afternoon, we came over to TPS, participated in sort of a routine.
Thank you. It was a very powerful day. Yeah, that just person's been thinking, but just the collaboration across the two buildings.
Well, and that was what came to mind, because I read that, and I was, I wanted to commend you for taking that on, because there's never enough opportunity to collaborate with your peers in that way. So I think that was a great thing, so thank you for taking a minute to give me a little word and thought.
Thank you. And it's really quiet without the students there, right? During the ghost walk? Well, they're chatted up, but it's minus 500 kids running around.
It's great.
Yeah, and it's really, it's nice when the professional development is among the teaching staff who really know what the needs, and then with the leadership of administrators to kind of share ideas and then talk about transitions and what they're doing, and look at, you know, classroom setups, so that sometimes is your best professional involvement. So kudos. You have the North Branford 25-26 calendar. We'll ask for you to approve that this evening. We work with neighboring towns to look at schedules and try to come up with your...
I was gonna ask you, we didn't mirror ACES, right? We just did it with our neighboring town.
Now, ACES is gone because of the holidays that some districts follow, the Jewish holidays and others don't.
Right.
You know, and when the Christmas break is versus Easter break, when they start, so we really, we look at surrounding towns. We try to match up where our staff members are coming from, with towns they live in, but they're, they come from all over now, so we kind of just do the best we can and put together a schedule. We are gonna work two years out, and then with the teachers union today, looking at the alignment of professional days. We're gonna look at the voting, the voting day, and try to look at moving possibly days around that, too, to get more bang for a buck out of PD. And then looking at the day before Thanksgiving. We've got a year to talk about that as well, if we instead of having a half-day, we have a day off before Thanksgiving. Now, this is all conversations that are out there for two years away, but I want you to be aware that's what we're talking about.
Thanks.
I said, "Well, what about the day after the Super Bowl?" Well, I ain't giving you that.
I do want to say the feedback that I heard from parents this year about the calendar was that it was much easier for the Jerome and Totucket kids, where they need that after school, with not having so many early dismissal days. So I think, my personal opinion is this calendar goes along with that. And I think it's very good for the work of families.
That's good feedback.
Excellent. I'll make a motion to approve the North Branford Public Schools 2025-2026 school calendar as submitted.
I'll second.
Take our vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? Seeing none, the motion carries.
Okay. The African Storage Building, we met with the council on Tuesday night. I'm gonna hand out to you all of the communications regarding the process, when it all started, and then what the council received Tuesday night, which you have not received or donations. John Florio actually brought them to me on Tuesday night, handed those out. So what's gonna happen from here is Monday night's permanent project meeting, VP Electric, Victor Peandrea, and Al Rose are gonna present the budget to the, to the committee. We know it's an $83,000 expenditure that we put in, but we have many donations and many gifts of labor. And we have the Ed Foundation, who gave us $5,000, which is incredible. So they're gonna work through that process. From there, it will go back to the council. John Florio went to Franklin's last night. He's at zoning tonight, or he would be here to answer. But it's pretty straightforward from here out, and we're hoping to, before we get snow on the ground or frozen, at least be able to level and clear that area and put some concrete down. The goal would be to have the kids in the winter months start to do the framing in the new construction class, construction area, wood shop, excuse me, and work through it so that when the spring hits and we have a fog, we're ready to start moving these, you know, walls out there and have the whole process go. So they'll learn everything from how you apply for permits, to maintenance, to zoning, what goes into it, pouring the slab, all of the electrical, wiring, heating, cooling, everything from the foundation up. They will, as I mentioned in my, all my letters, they will not be on ladders, they will not be on the roof. Okay? All right, so we'll have more information. I'll keep you apprised by email, and then at the next board meeting. Martha's gonna do the financial report.
It's great to see how eager people are willing to help with this project.
So there's one gentleman, not gonna name his name, District Delongo, but he, amazing. I met him over at his shop with John Florio, and he was more excited than we were. And what he's donating, every electrical piece, every wire, every light, every exterior link, anything with it, with his crew doing the work with VP Electric. And he, I, he just called me two days ago and said, "What do you need? Do you need more, anything else? What do you..." And he was so excited to be a part of it and to work with the group, and they all know each other. It's a small town, all these builders, the group that we work with, Dave Delongo and Al, they're wonderful, sleep best. So we're really excited for the spring, so.
It's a great project.
Yeah, and I have to...
The town should be proud of it.
The PAC group, like, group of parents that represent all the buildings. We had Pete there today, and they toured the high school and then got to go up at the second floor and look out at the fields and what's, you know, in the future and what we're looking to do. And, I mean, they were so happy, so pleased, and so proud of the progression of really cleaning up that back area and making it, you know, something really special, so.
I just getting these now, just going through them, is there a budget?
Yeah, that's, I knew that question was coming, and so I wondered how I knew that. And that's how I put it all together. So that's being done by Victor Peandrea and Al Rose. So they met with John Florio. So Zach and Beth will hear that on Monday night. So that's already, that's already done.
Okay.
And you know it's $83,000 that was procured through last year's budget, three separate purchase orders through three vendors that will be, well, maybe we won't give any money back, we just might put a pool in back there or something.
Sona.
They'll be calling about the pool tomorrow. Anyway, thank you.
At least a nice plunge.
Yeah, something, right? We already got that in the new trainer's room.
That's great.
All right, Martha, take it away.
Yeah, so some good news on the Tyler Munis software system. So as you know, we've been a little delayed in the area of the payroll human resource implementation because we were being told that there was a punch button, and that's exactly what it would be for employees, that they would, for those hourly employees would punch in and punch out, which would eliminate the need for paper time cards. And we kept getting tossed around, "It works, it's there," and no, it's not. So after being very loud squeaky wheels, we actually got Tyler to put into development for not only us, but their entire customer base, this punch button. So it is in development, and we're hoping that within the next six months, it will be ready for us to go ahead with. But we are moving forward with implementation, and if we are ready before the punch button is, we will simply continue with our paper time cards in the same system that we have now, and then we will import that into Munis until the button is ready. But we're pretty excited about that because it means that we don't have to buy a more expensive add-on that they were trying to sell us. It means we don't have to go out to a separate timekeeping clock system, and it's all included in our, in our price that we already pay. So just kudos to my payroll specialist and the accountant in my office, that we work together as a team, and we sit through the very long implementation training meetings. We had one today, and we're finally getting somewhere, so we're excited about that.
Those meetings are painful. They, I don't sit in the, but their offices next to mine, so I have to listen to from 8:00 in the morning till 3:00. They were nonstop, and it's, it's like laughing. So, but they, they get through it, so they're doing a great job.
Under General Fund 2425, so this current year, there's just a few things I want to point out for you. Under billable, you're probably wondering what that is. It's Object 117. So those are the salary expenditures that flow through our payroll system, but we actually get reimbursed for them through other means. So in other words, our game workers for our athletic high school department, and our after-school enrichment at both Totucket and Jerome, those staff members that work those programs for us, we pay them through our payroll system. It goes through our entire process, just like a regular employee. The only difference is that those funds that they're paid with are reimbursed by the student activity account at those respective schools. So at the end of the quarter, our accountant will send an invoice to those schools, and then those schools will send us a check, we'll deposit that money onto those lines, and then that negative will disappear. So it's just a way for us to track the expenditure and the receivable at the same time. Our substitute line, 121, the majority of that is our paraprofessional substitutes right now are being, our Yale students are filling those spots that we have open for Paris. So they are working as subs for us throughout the district where they're needed, and also substitute custodians. So those are the two things that make up that expenditure there. Health insurance, as we've seen month after month, that's where our employee contributions are posted as we go throughout the year. If you remember last month, we talked about transportation, that we had received an invoice for three special ed buses versus the two that I had budgeted for. We had a conversation with DACCO, and the reason why there are three special ed buses is because there's been an increase in the number of our three-year-old students who need car seats. So you can't put as many children on a van with car seats, so it was necessary to add another mode of transportation for those students to make sure that they stayed within the route time and the distance and things like that. The good news is that they were able to reduce a route by combining it with another route that we already had. Unfortunately for them, it was due to driver shortage, but fortunately for us, it works out for budget purposes. So I am tracking that as well, and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll, we'll almost even out. The late runs is an expenditure that we're gonna need to hopefully find some savings somewhere for in the budget, so I will be looking for that $34,000.
Is that for students who are doing something after school, or...
It is.
Yes.
We originally canceled it in two weeks, and we can't do it. We have to have late transportation for middle and high school students who are in closed activities after schoolwork. And I had many conversations with many parents and the staff of the critical importance of having a... We spoke to DACCO, we said, "We will work this out, we will find a way, but we need to have these buses running."
And what time did they run?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock date.
Four o'clock, I think.
Okay.
So the kids are out at 2:30, an hour and a half.
And then finally, electricity, as we've been talking about for the past several months. We are still working with our representatives at both UI and the solar company to get those large credits off of our smaller accounts and move them to the larger accounts. We haven't really seen any movement on our side, but we are still working with them, so we'll continue to keep you updated as we go along.
So if we have no cloudy days and sunshine through the winter, we're gonna be good shape. So the last three weeks, other than today, we can travel electricity.
As far as our 2% set aside, non-lapsing account, which is Fund 25, no difference there. The balance is still $5 left over from the 23-24 fiscal year. I anticipate that the audit for 23-24 will be complete. The auditors do have to have it posted to the state by December 31st, so I'm assuming that it will be ready for them to, to get that over to the state in time, and then we'll know exactly how much funds are left in the general fund from last year that we will move over to, to Fund 25. In regard to Family Resource Center, they're doing well so far year-to-date. Again, because we're only looking at two months, and the revenue and expenditures sometimes can be skewed, we just have to be careful that we understand that those numbers aren't set in stone. Food service, we got some great news on October 18th, that the district was awarded a equipment grant.
Who's the grant writer? Do they have a grant writer, or is there...
No, so that would be our food services director applied for the grant, and we submitted it, all the paperwork, and we were actually awarded $23,478 for our combi oven at the elementary school. So I believe it, it has been ordered, and I think it may even be here, and we're just trying to figure out the installation for that. So that was, that was some great news. No, so that would be our food services director applied for the grant, and we submitted it, all the paperwork, and we were actually awarded $23,478 for our combi oven at the elementary school. So I believe it has been ordered, and I think it may even be here, and we're just trying to figure out the installation for that. So that was some great news.
Christina will be here next month.
Yeah.
We'll step that out.
And as you can see from the numbers, she's doing really well. The breakfast program, which is only at the high school, I stand corrected from last month, I apologize about that, it's gone up from 450 breakfast servings in September to 783 in October, so I think that's a great increase in participation. And also, our lunch count for October is up over September and is up over October for last fiscal year as well, so she continues to really do a great job with that program, and it's very successful.
So on the second page, where it shows the changes?
Yes.
All of those are increases from last year?
Just on my page.
Budget transfers, good luck.
So where it says changes in, yes.
Those are all increases from the page?
Yes. Yeah, so...
And this is across all four schools, not just the high school?
All four schools, with the exception of the school breakfast, that is only at the high school, and the school breakfast did not exist last year, so that's why there's really not any, you're not going to see any differences listed on the change in meals served, because there's nothing to compare it to.
Thank you.
Marc?
Yes.
Can you just go over the budget transfers?
Yes, of course.
The paraprofessional school to work, the $67,477...
Where's the line on it?
The line is...
On the first page, the second to the last entry.
Yes.
Paraprofessional school to work, so we're funding that for $67,000.
Is that a new position?
It is not. I'm not sure if it was the way that the budget information got imported from a spreadsheet into the Munis, or if it was something that I coded into special ed, regular, paraprofessional, and didn't break out school to work. But for some reason, that that line was not, did not have a budget allocation, so we're looking to fund that. So the school to work is our orgahouse program with our 18 to 22-year-olds.
But that would be for multiple, three pairs?
Yes.
It's not for one. One pair doesn't make $67.
Okay. No, no, yeah, that's multiple, multiple individuals.
I wouldn't have any words for six.
So it wasn't funded, so there were no pairs funded in the budget?
No, the line, the line itself. So I would have to go back and dig to see if it was an import issue when I went from a spreadsheet into the Munis system, or if in fact I had those three individuals coded to high school rather than school to work.
But where you're funding it, are those the sources, special education?
Yes.
High school, those are, I mean, did you like sit down where that money is?
Yeah, so the money is available in any line that has a negative amount, not only for this transaction, but for the rest of them in the budget transfers.
Okay. All righty. There was something else that I, I know there was some, there was a typo, wasn't there? It was a typo of the ECA that was...
Yes.
It said Jerome Harrison.
It said, so for under tuition 561 is the object. I don't know if it's on your sheets, it must be. Where, you'll see it says Jerome ECA magnet.
Yeah, it's on the last page.
And the question was, will Jerome students who are our elementary school students don't attend ECA because that is for older kids? And so, thank you for catching that. But when we created the account number in Munis for the very first time, we copied the description, ECA magnet, from the high school, and just put it onto the Jerome line. So I'll go back in and just remove the ECA from that description.
So you're looking for, is everybody okay with all that?
Just the top one, I have one. Teacher's salary, theater, is there, do they, is the MBIS...
Where are you looking?
Sorry, first page, top...
The theater?
Triple one.
Theater and...
Yeah, the theater, so there's two of them, right?
There's one teacher. When I budgeted for, I budgeted the entire salary at the intermediate school, and that teacher is in fact split 80/20.
So we're talking one teacher only?
One teacher, yep.
Okay, all right.
And so I'm just moving that portion of her salary that's attributable to the high school.
Just wanted to make sure.
So you're okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the 2024-2025 budget line item transfers as submitted.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any pos, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. Town and independent requests, there's none at this time. We're obviously in communication of projects and things that are going, so that's, we need to spend time on that. The renovation project, we had signed off, the town has signed off on the building. There's just some last-minute things that need to be completed in the gymnasium, the tech area, and in the weight room and its connections, they were there today. Red thread was connecting speakers to the system in the ceiling, and then we're doing some other practical work. The gymnasium is pretty close right now, just minor punch list items. It looks great. Culinary, they're finishing up some things, and the wood shop was waiting on a couple of things that are, you know, in the works, so we're really in good shape there. The building is just about 100%, and the classes will be inside of the gym. Mr. Stuppa, do we know next week, or?
We're hoping for next week. I think, for, I was encouraged by the court, they definitely would pay, have keys.
Right.
Next week, our key classes.
Nice.
So for three years, they've been in the front of the auditorium, they've been out on the tennis court, they're in the parking lot, you know, dodging cars as part of their cardio, so they'll be happy to be in that new gym. The weight room classes have been going in, the key classes can wait here and use the equipment, so everyone's excited, they, every time they see us, they're like, "Oh, it's open."
Was TCO today or yesterday?
It was yesterday.
Was it yesterday or today, TCO date?
Date, I think it's today.
It was today?
He was, I know the gentleman was away last week.
Yeah, yeah, yes, he was away, right, right.
And then he was coming back, and then, so we were anxious to wait, but I thought it might have been today.
So yesterday or today, just fall apart, right?
Yeah. Yep. We're going to turn the school's security update in executive session, and then we'll have a motion for that, and that will take leave.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll get about that. Negotiations will be the same thing. Budget, I'm going through your committee reports. I don't want to speak in your, but we're back to budget and committee.
No meeting? Curriculum and instruction, no meeting pension, no meeting policy? We have some things before us.
These are second meetings.
Second meetings.
It says first year, these are second.
Second.
I just want to say that Judy and I both had an opportunity to meet with Sarah and Dr. Carter to ask questions in person. Now I know what the proper channels are to go through to ask questions, so that was really constructive.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, I also would like to thank Ms. Delberti and Dr. Welch for spending that time with us. It was a lot of time out of your day, but I certainly left there feeling like I had a much better understanding of what I'd be voting for tonight, so truly appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
So, make the motion.
Beth, do you have anything that you want to say to any of these?
Um...
Or none, we're all good?
No, we have one discussion, we're going to do a motion to...
Go ahead.
All right. My question to approve policy, P. 1030, admission to the public schools, that will be for each, I have submitted.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any pos, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve policy, P. 1040, homeless children in youth, submitted.
All second. Does anyone have any questions, or?
Okay, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any pos, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve policy, P. 3100, live animals in schools submitted.
All second.
Any discussion or questions in the house? Take the vote, then, see none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any pos, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve policy, P. 3100, homeless children submitted.
All second.
Any discussion, questions, concerns? Take that vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any pos, any abstentions? See none? Motion carries unanimously.
My third question to approve policy, P. 3300, in order to advance portion of programs and challenging for homelessness.
All second.
Any discussion? See none, take the vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any pos, and any abstentions? There are none, that motion carries unanimously as well. Now we come to ACES.
Just a question on, we just approved it, right? But the live animals in school, do we have any service animals in our schools today, like at this point?
Right now.
No, that's...
In my time here, we have had a guy in a dog where the student was visually impaired.
I didn't know that.
But now we don't.
Okay.
We are going to be doing work with some therapy dogs next month coming through, pilot bases and working in each building, so that's lined up in each building in December.
Who brings those, the animals?
We have a person that has worked with us in the past, Heidi is the dog, it's a bull.
Excellent, nice. Sure the children will enjoy that.
I'm sure the staff will.
Yeah, right?
And then ACES, so I went to that meeting, and I mean, I just, I didn't know all what ACES did, and all the programs that they run, and all of the resources that they have, it's pretty, it's pretty extensive. Adult ed programs to special education to magnet schools, it's just...
It's a big business.
It's a huge, big business, and they are on top of it. The meeting was really informative, but really the takeaway was that everything's going up. Tuition, transportation, substitute rates, anywhere from 3% to 18%.
Right, and that does impact us, our budgetary decision that can be processed, because there are risks, and so we will be impacted by their increases.
Mm-hmm. So, okay, that was that. Report from building committee?
Yeah, we talked about the pavement issue that we have behind the school, by where the dumpsters were, and we're going to try to figure that out on our own, if you haven't noticed about that. But the Whitestone representative was there, and he gave a pretty solid explanation as to how that might be happening, or why that might have happened, but we're going to continue to kind of press the issue.
I'm sorry, what's happening?
This is where the dumpsters were before the final completion, where they are now, like on a pad, you know, they're the...
High school?
High school.
Okay.
There's some damaged pavement, sorry. There you go. And TCO squared away, and I think punch list items, we still, these numbers are always iffy, so they change every day, I feel like, so I won't get into that. And that's all I have that's really significant.
Communication, no meeting.
Before we move on to executive session, do you want to move on?
You, um, what about?
That's...
Before you go to that next piece, I think many of you asked about the bracelet that I'm wearing, and this was from the 18 to 22 program.
Yes, that's so...
Our NB pride, and they were selling them at the luncheon today for Thanksgiving. So if you are interested, you can email the $3 you're allowed to tip, and it will go back into their program, so we obviously know we have...
Okay.
We brought home business, we're getting into jewelry, arts and crafts, and then some other things, so.
That's nice.
I think I might have had a blog of the students today. I'm so embarrassed, the shirts that they were wearing today, the initials on the shirts were that they have on their team shirts.
They're in circles.
You got them for the program.
It's a small group.
Yeah.
And it's just...
That might be what it was. But so they have some sweat, they got gear now, so...
The letters were lost.
No, no, I just am blanking on the letters. No, this is a shout-out out there. So the staff...
Bring that up on camera.
Staff was in their shirts, in their purple shirts, where the students were, and then the adults had, excuse me, long-sleeve sweatshirts on. So they were all uniformed, looked fantastic, they were so proud to be out there, and then participated in the seniors' work, so it was a great... Anyway, so if you are interested, let me know, opportunities. All right, that's my call.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to visitors.
Yes.
Oh, Senator, can I just, we have a package, we have the budget process calendar, and last meeting, you changed the dates to Wednesday because that might have been...
Oh, can you tell specifically, what, where are you at?
It's the...
Looks like this side. Like middle of the packet, maybe, middle of the packet?
Yes.
And you changed the, but this...
The fifth and the 12th, Wednesday.
Can you mark those?
Yeah, I changed mine, they've, they've got it.
Can you circle that?
I'll make sure I...
So we're going to send out an email tomorrow, too, that we're going to make the change, and then we'll send there.
We approved to change it to the Wednesday of February 2nd, but it's still down here as the...
Yeah, I think this is just an old copy.
Yeah, but it's in the minutes of, let's see, my packets?
Yeah, I'll have, I'll make sure Anna has the new one.
Thank you, thank you. And may I just offer my, if we're going to go to executive session, my congratulations and admiration to all of the schools for your celebration of Veterans Day. I think it is such a, such an amazing thing that we do here in North Bramford, whereas being in school as opposed to being out of school. And I think that each school really handles it appropriately, age appropriately, so that everybody can really benefit from that particular day. So thank you to the administrators and all of the people who got together to plan those days. I know it takes an awful lot of work, but I think our students get a lot out of it, so thank you so much.
And I have to say, we got a lot out of it, too. I had so much fun, I was in tears almost the entire time, and my husband even only wouldn't admit it, but he was as well. I flew over at one point, and I was like, it was, she said I wasn't going to make it through it, and she was right. I mean, it was untouchable, unbelievable. It was, it was more than what I ever expected, it was, it was...
Bravo. We seem to go to Good of the Order before visitors are pressed, but I'll, but I'll say on that, I received an email the other day. Marcy, can you please read at Good of the Order, a citizen's statement for me? Once again this year, I would like to thank our NB schools for a wonderful Veterans Day celebration. I enjoy sitting with the high schoolers, passing along my years of experience in a way they can easily understand. I kind of stress to them when answering their questions that I too was a young adult when I went in the service, and that my experiences were a part of growing up, even though it was away from home, and in my case, a foreign land. Keeping it simple made sense to me. The kids at JHS are another favorite for me. To see these curious faces waving those flags and screaming is priceless. It makes my day when those kids, it makes my day when those kids spot their parents or grandparents, their eyes light up in pride, so wonderful to see. It also is nice to see a good amount of veterans that come out on Veterans Day.
Again, thanks to all who make this happen. Good Lord willing, I'll see you next year. Bill Sadosdina. Oh, my goodness.
So I, I want to thank the board. I know that a couple of you have businesses that you just can't walk out the door because, well, you'd be arrested for leaving children unattended. But everyone else that was there participating or there, the, the staff really appreciates that. They really do. The students love to see you. And I think it obviously gives you just a real nice feel for the work that goes into these programs and how serious that they take them and how special the veterans feel. They really feel appreciated and that's, that's the cherry on top of anything that we can do that. And we'll continue to. So thank you, thank you, thank you for being there.
I just want to say, when I came in for the breakfast, one of the students came, took me, escorted me to wherever I would be sitting and eating breakfast. So I said, well, how did you get this position? Did you, did your teacher ask you to volunteer? Not knowing, she said, no, I'm in student council. So I was like, good for you. I just didn't even know that we did this at that young ages. I was like, my goodness. And they were just so poised and so confident. It was really adorable. And I guess we'll go back now to.
Wait, real quick. Oh, then we can wrap this up, I swear. So I know last time we talked about Mrs. Messidi leaving the junior high school. She's a math teacher that retired. And her replacement I met at conference room this week, who was, my daughter's now has her for sixth grade, but when she was in first, her student teacher was Ms. Proda. And Ms. Proda was her teacher as well. So like we really do keep it in town here and it's really amazing to see. And then also the junior high school yesterday, the trip to New York, the chorus. And like we sent our kids out of Boston to New York with teachers and not freaking out all day, right? And they had the best time, like that staff had it to the T. They were so amazing with communicating with us when the buses were stuck in traffic and just the whole day was incredible. So thank you for providing those opportunities for our students. And now we can go to.
Not necessarily, we've got so many good things to talk about. We are proud of our schools. There's a lot to be proud of here.
Bracelets.
I put school merch to it, the website, so we're waiting for that.
I know, I should have. Oh, and you have merch too from the store.
Yep. Yep. Put a big order in there. Okay. Now we'll let the visitors have some time. So any visitors like to speak, come on up.
Rose Angeloni, I'm liaison to your board. So I just want to start off with thanking the superintendent and the board and all of our administrators for doing the food drive specifically for the Thanksgiving baskets, which is a tremendous help to the food pantry. Tomorrow, they will be handing out the Thanksgiving baskets in addition to their weekly groceries that they get. And they collected, the, the schools collected five hundred and thirty pounds. And that's just strictly for the Thanksgiving baskets. So Rudy Nae had given me a list and we divided that up between the schools and so that all of the items were covered. And then John Florio went around after the two weeks and picked it all up and brought it to the food bank. So thank you so much for all of your help with that. It is greatly needed this year and she totally thanks all of you also for your cooperation and collaboration with the food pantry. Second, I just wanted to kind of update you on the bathroom situation. So the permanent project building committee looked at the bathrooms, the outside bathrooms at the athletic field. And so we found out that they get scoped every year. So there are no plugs in the lines. They're, they're not plugged or anything. There was some issue during construction phase where Gilbane had broken the water line. And so they had to fix that, which they did. And then John Florio had also taken out the paper towel holders because that is a big cause of clogged lines and put in hand dryers. They were not hooked, hooked up to the electrical yet. But through the process, the building committee found out that, again, Gilbane had used parts of the electrical panel for things with the high school. So there's not enough room to hook up the hand dryers. But the permanent project building committee told John Florio to go ahead and get a subpan, whatever he needs to hook that up and to send the bill to permanent project. And they will take care of paying to get that done so that the bathrooms can stay open. So that's the update on that. And they have been open at games. I've heard from people that they are open. So thank you very much for doing that and getting that done and permanent project for their efforts in making sure that everything was corrected on it. So there should be no cost to the district for getting that fixed on there. And then also again, I would, I would like to also thank all of the schools for their programs for Veterans Day. I attended two of them. I've been attending the Jerome for the last three years with my son, who is a veteran. And his nieces and nephews go to school there. So it's really special for them to see their uncle and he gets a big kick out of it. And the really touching part for us with that is he had Jean Proto also for a teacher when he was at Jerome. And every year without fail, when he walks by, she always gives him a big hug. And it's just, it's just so nice to see that and that connection from when he was in Jerome. And, you know, now he's thirty one and going there and it's, it's just very nice. And I also went to TVES this year and it was the first time that I saw their programs, even though I worked there for fifteen years, you never got to see the program. You're in the office, but it was really a very nice program. And the kids did a great job. And the programs, like Judy had said, they're very age appropriate as they go along. And it was really a very nice program on there. So thank you for that. And then my last request is I would just like to know if I could get emailed a copy of the line item transfers that were done tonight. If you can just email that for me. So I have that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So just updating on the, the bathroom, the toilet situation. So when they constructed that, it's a one inch water line going down. So what happens is there wasn't enough water going. So Gilbane shut it down and they did the construction project. So coming off COVID and then knocking down the building, there was no water out there. So when we ran the construction to the center, we had bottled water to run the concessions. There was no water out there. We got an okay to do it with the health department and we did. The continual problem will be, it would be like all of us coming to your house for Thanksgiving and lining up to use the bathroom and flushing it consecutively. But now you go to a football game and you've got hundreds and hundreds of people in two bathrooms. And the, the water flushing in the toilets, not the urinals, they can't handle it. That, that's the major. So we can take the paper out of it, but you still could have the water because it can't recoup fast enough with that much usage. So the good news is, is that when I have the next big project that I'm going to be bringing towards you soon, which is exciting, I can't wait. There's going to be a recommendation, not from Mr. Schoolmaker, but from Mr. Merola, who is overseeing the, you know, facilities in the town for some upgrades to possibly do out on that site, which would be really exciting. That could launch us into a whole nother crazy upgrade. So stay tuned.
The next regular report of education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty four. We'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section one dash two two five of the Connecticut general statutes as permitted by section one dash two hundred, six A and C of the Connecticut general statutes to discuss agenda items, seven H security and eight A negotiations. Second. All in favor? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford School Administrators Association. That's redundant. For the, for the period of July first, twenty twenty five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And I'd like to make another motion to approve access control system upgrades at Jerome Harrison Elementary School, North Bramford Intermediate School, Stanley T. Williams Community Center and Totucket Valley Elementary School. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes, any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Do whatever you want.
Thank you.